I'd like to welcome everyone to the Minden City Council Regular Session Monday, August 2, 2021 at 5:30 PM, City Hall and the Council Chambers. We would like to open our prayer with Pam Bloxum and Mr. Wayne Edwards will do our pledge.
Lord God, crime is on the increase within our city and within our country. From the depths of our hearts, we pray that you will comfort, heal, and bless all victims of crime. We ask that you protect all people from the evil of crime and violence. We pray especially for life-changing conversion for all criminals and the violent. Remove all evil from their hearts, fill them with your goodness and love, that they may cease their evil works, and that our city and our land be free from the scourge of crime and violence. We pray also for the grace to purge ourselves of all violence in our own thoughts and actions, in our family life, in our friendships, and in our relationships with others. Lord, may we all commit to living together peacefully. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everyone to silence their cellphones before we move forward. I'd also like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda, to add item M to adopt a resolution for the airport rescue grant.
Motion made by Mr. Michael Roy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Pam Bloxum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we do this?
Yes, ma'am. Motion fails.
No. It passes.
No, it has to be unanimous.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Okay. Vote close.
How much money was that?
Thirty-two thousand dollars.
So we're going to lose thirty-two thousand?
It was... Don't leave yet, Mr. Berto. We're going to lose a free thirty-two thousand dollars for the airport. And so what we will do is call a special session to try to see if we can get some change minds, because this is free money. And do you want to change your mind, Mr. Bradford?
Is there a deadline on receiving this money?
Yes, sir. Mr. Berto, what's the...
August 20.
August 20.
When?
So we will have to have a special session to try to get this approved, to receive free money for the airport.
Is there a nature, anything involved that I'm not aware of?
It's a COVID relief grant, so it's just a reimbursement...
Free thirty-two thousand dollars.
Thirty-two thousand dollars here again.
Any specifics of what we have to use it for out there?
It's reimbursing us for operational costs because of COVID.
Okay, so we're going to the...
Mayor, is it proper to ask what the opposition is about from our colleagues?
Mr. Bradford, what's your opposition to vote against it?
Let's move on.
Let's move on, is your opposition?
Well, I think it's fair that we...
We don't have a full council here for one thing.
I think it's fair that we let the public know why.
That we don't have a full council.
Yeah.
That's my reason. Is that okay with you?
But we...
I don't believe thirty-two thousand dollars.
It's not okay with you.
But we have a quorum.
Well, we don't have a... All of the council members.
Mr. Edwards, would you voice what your opposition to this is?
Pam, turn around and look.
Thank you. I'm sorry. At first, it was a negative. I'm so sorry.
Mr. Bradford, okay. So this is not added, the free thirty-two thousand dollars, Mr. Berto, is not added to the agenda to get approved. Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
We will now go into a public hearing with the proposed 2021-2022 City of Minden budget. If there's any questions about the budget, we'll take those at this time. Okay, there being no questions, we will move into our regular agenda items. So the public hearing is closed, and we are now in our regular agenda. A is the audit presentation for the fiscal year 2019-2020, and we have Christine Cole here with the law firm of Wise, Martin &amp; Cole. Would you come to the mic, please?
County firm.
The county firm. What did I say?
Law.
Law firm, I'm sorry.
I'm going to try to speak through the mask, and so if it becomes muffled or if I say something that's hard to understand, let me know, and I'll try to make some adjustments. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and city officials and the public. I'm Christine Cole, representing the Certified Public Accounting Firm of Wise, Martin, and Cole. We were engaged to perform the financial audit for the City of Minden for the year ended September 30, 2020. The report was submitted to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office in Baton Rouge. The report was extended to be filed with the final extension date of July 30, 2021. Normally, the report is due within six months after the year end, which is March 31, but extensions were filed to allow the city and our firm the additional time to get the records needed for the audit. Tonight, I will be providing the general highlights of the city's financial performance over the past year, and also discuss the current year findings that were mentioned within the report. The overall opinion on the financial statements as presented can be found on pages 1 through 4 of the report. As stated, the audit includes an examination on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and the disclosures in the financials. The generally accepted accounting principles require that financial data for all component units be included within the City of Minden. But as has been done in prior years, our opinion is being issued on the primary government financials for the City of Minden, which means that our opinion covers the activity of the City of Minden, but does not include two component units, specifically the City Court of Minden and the Minden Ward Marshal. In the city's report, we did not include that activity within the financial information. And so our opinion that we're issuing is on the city's information excluding those two entities. Separate financials can be obtained by contacting those organizations. Now, this year, our opinion on the primary government financial statements was unqualified, and an unqualified opinion means that the financials are fairly stated in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. Starting on pages 5 through 14, there's a section called "The Management's Discussion and Analysis." And the purpose of this section is to help make all the financial information a little bit more meaningful. I would recommend that if you're interested in reading this report, that you first look at this section, and it'll give you general insight into the city's financial performance. There's a lot of comparative information comparing 2019 to the 2020 audited numbers. On page 9 of the Management's Discussion and Analysis, you'll see... A table which compares 2020 and 2019, and you'll see governmental activities, and you'll see business-type activities. Now, to talk a little bit about the governmental activities and the results in 2020, the revenues of the governmental activities were 10.8 million, which is comparable to last year's revenues that were reported of 10.75 million. The sales taxes continue to be a source, a major source of governmental revenues, and sales tax revenues comprise 59% of the city's total governmental revenues. Sales taxes for the 2020 year were up by over $333,000 compared to last year, or 2019. And that increase in sales tax revenues actually absorbed the decreases that occurred in your other governmental revenues. The overall expenses of the governmental activities decreased by approximately $54,000 to $14.2 million, but the city still reports a deficit of 3.4 million. The top three areas of expenses are public safety, which is 37% of total expenses, the general government, which is 21% of expenses, and the recreation, parks and recreation, which is 15% of the expenses. The business-type activities is where the city charges a fee to customers to help cover all or most of the cost of its water, sewer, and electrical services. The total revenues reported decreased over last year by $3.8 million. The prior-year revenues were higher because they included an $800,000 capital grant that the city did not have again this year. It also had an additional $1.2 million that was from the results of the settlement of the SWEPCO lawsuit, as well as reimbursement of some power cost adjustments. The overall charges to customers decreased by $1.62 million, mainly occurring within the electric bill charges. The total cost to operate the utility system was $18.7 million, which is less than last year's cost of 19.4, so the overall cost also decreased by $714,000. And these are just highlights. Overall, combining both the governmental and the business-type activities of the city, this year, the city's net position reported a decrease of approximately $1.1 million as a result of its operations. And last year's, this is in contrast to last year's net position, which actually increased by $1.8 million. One particular fund I wanted to talk a little bit about tonight can be found on page 20 And this is actually a statement of revenues and expenses over the governmental funds. And the governmental funds include the different funds that the city maintains to account for the activities of the general fund, as well as, you'll see presented separately, the results of the sales tax funds that you have. I was going to comment a little bit on the general fund itself, and as you can tell on page 20, overall, the general fund operated at a deficit of 9.2 million. Now, in the prior year, the deficit was 8.6 million. Now, the general fund expenditures, as you can tell, the amount of the general fund expenditures as reported that are not covered by taxes and licenses and grants and other revenues are generally supported by transfers from the sales tax fund, the special sales tax, which is the sewer plant sales tax fund, and also the utility fund. And what I'm bringing the focus to is just to let you know, the general fund itself, that 9.1 or that 9.2 deficit for 2020, we talk a lot about the sales tax revenues increasing. We always focus on the sales tax revenues. Well, a large part of the sales tax revenues essentially goes to cover a lot of the expenses of the general fund, which is not uncommon. So for this year, 2020, the sales tax fund generated about 3.2 million and ended up transferring out about 3 million to cover, to the general fund. And that left a little bit for the future, about $129,000 to be available for future transfers or expenses. The special sales tax is supposed to be used. It's restricted for specifically recreation-type expenses and sewage-type expenses. So that particular sales tax, while it may have generated revenue, it's limited in what it can be used for. So the sewer sales tax actually transferred approximately 1.3 million to the general fund. And that left, the deficit was funded by transfers from the utility fund of approximately 4.9 million. And so I basically bring that up because what essentially happened at the end of 2020 is the utility fund had a surplus, and that surplus is reported in Statement H. But as you can see, it transferred 4 million, or 4.9 million, to the general fund. So essentially, what surplus is, it reported basically transferred all of that and then some of the future resources that were available. And I just wanted to just bring that out as far as specifically, to just show some of the connection between the general fund and what it takes to operate the general fund, as well as where that money comes from, the different types of financing or funding that is used to cover the expenses of that particular fund. To basically obtain an overall assessment of how the city's doing, you would not only look at financial factors, but then also the non-financial factors, such as changes in your property tax base and conditions of roads. On pages 16 through 104, the financial statements and the footnote disclosures and the schedules that are part of the report, you'll find those there. These pages present financial information in much more detailed format as required by the standards, and tonight, I've only highlighted some of those items that I previously discussed. At this time, I wanted to make reference there, part of the audit is also not only looking at the financial information, but looking at items identified as findings that are reported to the legislative auditor. And we're required to not only look at what findings there may be for the current year, but we have to address findings that were brought up in the prior year. The prior-year findings that were reported for last year's audit can be found on page There were five findings from the prior year that we looked at. Two of these findings were considered resolved, and the other three findings were not resolved and were included in the current year's listing of findings. And on pages 109 through 111, you'll see where we have identified the financial statement findings in the audit, and have identified the conditions found, as well as our suggestions and recommendations. The responses of the city to those findings can be found on pages 113 through 114. As far as, the report's been provided, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go through it, and as far as the particular findings that are listed there, again, like I said, those three findings, you'll see that they are repeat findings. It identifies some areas that we suggest for improvement. I didn't... Those that can be found, you basically can see those responses, which had to be attached to the audit when it was submitted, as far as the city's plan to correct those. In general, I've covered some aspects of the city's financial performance for the year ended September 30 of 2020, and have briefly discussed the opinion that was issued on the financial statements. As always, I'm available to the mayor and the city council to answer any questions that you may have concerning our audit report. On behalf of our team at Wise, Martin, and Cole, we do want to thank the city and the council, and the department heads, Michael Flor, a city clerk, for working with us and helping us get the information needed so that we could complete the audit, and their cooperation as well. Mayor, council, I present this report to you for your approval.
Is there any discussions or...
This motion should be 2020.
Okay. Any discussions or questions, Ms. Cole?
On page 109, on the conditions found, to let the public know what a clearing fund is, why we reported a negative cash balance of over 1.9 million?
Yes, sir. I can explain that.
They would like to know what this is.
Okay. So one of the items that was, this particular condition is listed under our finding labeled "Internal Controls Over Financial Reporting." And to give you an idea of why this was listed, essentially, what we're citing is there needs to be a review process to make sure that when balances are presented in the financials to be audited, that we're issuing an opinion that says they're fairly stated. So one of the items that we noted was when we were given the trial balance or the information for this clearing fund, that it did actually report a negative cash balance of 1.9 million. So, Mr. Bradford, your question was to just explain what the clearing fund is. So the clearing fund is essentially a bank account that the city uses that it will pay bills through this clearing fund. And so it's a bank account that's used to pay bills, and then the other funds, your water fund, your general fund, it basically reimburses that clearing fund for its share of the bills that are being paid. So you use a clearing fund to essentially pay your vendors one bill instead of paying them with three separate checks. So while you have a general fund and you have a utility fund that shares in those expenses, they may be sharing this particular bill. So a bill is paid through the clearing fund, but if the bank account needs money to cover the bill, the general fund and the utility fund reimburse that fund to pay it. So a clearing fund is a common way of accounting for paying bills. Now, the specific finding that's noted is that when we were given the balance sheet for the clearing fund, it reported one line item that had a negative 1.9 million. Now, we cited that because right underneath it was a line item for the regular bank account, and it was actually, it was the balance that was presented, that represented the balance in the bank account. That 1.9 million was a result of some corrections that had to be made in the prior year. When there was a computer conversion, some of the accounts for the bank account that were used by the old system kept these same accounts, and it kept these balances. And whenever the system was converted in 2019, it might have left balances in these accounts that the prior audit correctly reported. And so it just, while it's a large number, it's an accumulation of activity that basically just needed to be corrected. So if you have someone who's looking at the ledger and reviewing the balances, as soon as they see that number show up, then they have the opportunity to go back and say, wait, why is that there? Oh, and find out, and make the adjustment to correctly report it in the correct account. So the 1.9 was just a bunch of transactions that should have been reported in the next account on the trial balance.
So you're saying it's been resolved?
Yes, yes, sir. The adjustments have been made to correct it. However, when we were given the information, the reason it's being noted is because it should have been corrected, we feel, before we received the numbers.
But had somebody been reconciling, doing what they were supposed to, checking balance...
Right.
Which is... Would have been taken care of.
Yes.
You wouldn't have found that.
Right. Right. So that...
To lack of employees and that.
Basically, lack of review process to look at those numbers and identify, oops, that should be corrected. The adjustments, actually, we noted when we were performing the audit, we obviously looked at that, and we saw where adjustments were made to correct it properly, but those had been not recorded to the right account, which, if you, in the process of review, you would have seen it and been able to fix it before the numbers were presented. And that's what that is. It's been corrected.
All right. Page 110. 2020-03, if one day you have conditions, inventory maintained by the city. I see the third item says that we observe items tested had insufficient incorrect location recorded for easy locating items, whereabouts. What I'm concerned about, you say that you could not locate four items. What other four items that you could not?
I would have to go back to see the list for the test work of the items that were not located.
Are these low-end items that I recall that, do we have a trunk to come?
These, thank goodness, these were not...
Dump truck.
A whole dump truck. Since this is a repeat finding, and we had instances in the prior year, you had large items that were not being added to the schedule correctly or updated, these items were not large items. I can get that specific list for you. What happened though is we pick a sample, and if we pick something on a schedule that says we have all of these items, whether it's a small $500 item or a big dump truck that we say, show me the dump truck, if we can't locate it because someone left it on there, then that's why we let you know. The schedule is obviously, it needs to be updated. If the city has a process and has procedures in place to make sure that that schedule is updated. So what we're saying is, you want to have the process, but you also want to have those procedures performed. And so if a person is given a schedule and they are not really updating it, then when we get the schedule and we pick something to see, and it's supposed to be there, then if it's not there, we tell you we can't locate it, and it's the city to find out what happened, what do we need to do to make sure this doesn't happen going forward. And this has been, again, this is also a repeat finding, and I can get you the specific list of those four items, but if my memory serves correctly, they weren't large ticket items. They were just, they were probably things that were just left on the list that should have been taken off.
I'd like to know what they are.
I'll get those. I'll get those for you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cole, I want to come back to the clearing fund. Please correct me if I'm wrong. During your audit, you have not found any mishandling of any financial activities. Is that correct?
If anything had come to our attention, it would be included in the report. So these are just internal control suggestions. We did look into these items, and nothing came to our attention that we need to report.
The clearing fund itself, it is simply a transaction process?
The clearing fund is exactly that. It's just a way for you to pay bills with one check and not have to pay a bill with three separate checks.
It was no 1.9 million. There was no 1.9 million, no specific.
I think it was a matter of, those corrections were not posted to the correct account.
Yeah. Thank you.
But we do have a problem, per se, because you felt, you found other findings in that same, intercompany receivables and payables not being balanced. You know, so that, those are things that any business should be doing on a monthly basis, taking their bank statement, payables, receivable.
Making sure that the balances that are generated at the end of the month or at the end of the quarter, having a process in place to make sure that when they look at those balances, there's nothing that comes to their attention that would say, wait a minute, I need to look into that. Because that review process helps you catch errors on a timely basis. And if you don't have personnel that are in place to perform those reconciliations or those regular checks, then you have the risk that by the time the numbers are generated and, and ready to be audited, there could be some errors in them. And a more bigger issue would be that you could have a serious misstatement that may not be corrected on a timely basis, which is why this finding is included in here. There were no material misstatements that would indicate misappropriation that came to our attention. Everything we looked into was something we were able to see, oh, this is, this needs to be corrected, this is a posting error, or this is an adjustment that wasn't made. So, that, that's why this is, is being mentioned, to, to bring it to that, to your attention to see that something can be done to make correction.
And then, on page 110, where it is, just curious, the, approximately about $52,000 worth of deposits that were made through the police department and all that, has that been corrected and been reconciled like it should be, you know, on a monthly basis so that that doesn't happen again?
At this time, when this was brought to the city's attention, we, we worked with the police department to try, we're going to try to see if they can institute a little bit more, a different process for keeping up with the bonds and the funds that are being deposited so that we can easily identify who made the deposit, as well as has it been paid out based on whatever the court has ordered? Or are we supposed to, are we still holding that deposit? I think that's, that particular $52,000 is an amount that is in the bank account that still needs to be researched and determined. Does that belong to the city, or does that belong to different bond, bonds that have been placed?
Christine, you know, you are listening at these different reports, and basically, we get the same finding each year. And you're probably not going to answer this question when I ask, but I will. Do you suggest that the city, the side of Mindon, need an internal audit program outside of the yearly audit to maintain control of finances and the way we conduct our business? Something with a little teeth in it, so that each year, we have these findings that we come year over year with the same thing? You don't have to answer.
No, go ahead and answer.
I would, I would say that, at this point, you know, the city is a large city that accounts for a lot of financial transactions. It's one of, it, it has several complex areas. It's not just one bank account, it's many bank accounts and many things going on. This upcoming year, you're going to have grants that have to be accounted for, and you have to show that I paid that money and use that money the way I was supposed to use it. Now, generally, the finance department of the city of Mindon is designed to be that department, you have your city clerk, you have an assistant city clerk, and then there's several staff within that department that address all the different areas, make sure the different reconciliations are performed, receivables, payables, payroll. There's a lot of money that has to be accounted for properly. And there are some agencies, government agencies, as well as large businesses, depending on the size, that do actually have an internal audit department. And that internal audit department is designed to do testing of controls, to make sure that, that what's in place is actually occurring, is being implemented, and would catch those things during the year. Now, am I recommending that that is something that the city of Mindon needs to have, or is that something that would be good to have? An internal audit is something that's good to have, but then the question is, is that practical due to the size of the city? Because you can also function that way as long as you have a city clerk, assistant city clerk, and your personnel within the finance department that know what those requirements are, what the standard is, and then implements those policies. You can have the best controls, and the city has, has controls that have been identified and been put in place. But being implemented timely, or regularly, or consistently, is a different, a different story.
And I guess the reason I asked that question, we have several city departments with a lot of activity going on in each department. And when those activities involve expenses being paid, it's hard to get the invoices and the correct data back to the right place so it can be properly implemented. And I can see, sometimes during, we have a natural disaster or a storm or something, where invoices and expenses just get all out of whack. And we, when we think things are normal, when they really they aren't. But we don't have oversight to actually look at that to make sure that we stay in compliance, to my knowledge.
I think, I think that there are different things that the city might be able to implement, whether you have a formal internal audit or basically a committee on the council that basic, that if there's certain things that, that need to be put in place to be checked, working within the finance department. Because there really does need to be oversight where you assess where the risks are. And it's not about waiting for the auditor to come in and tell you where your risks are after the fact. It's about knowing ahead of time, risks could be in the area of expenditures when it's related to these grants. And then, sometimes we approach it, we're automatically focused more on the risk of money and did it make it to the bank account? Was it properly reported and properly recognized? But the city itself internally should be coming up with these risk assessments, whether you have internal audit or not, so that, that the city, city clerk and the mayor can, can address those areas that are coming up. You have.
Christine, like, like say, we bring in and we take and assign a accounts payable clerk and then accounts receivable clerk, which would do those functions, and then the assistant clerk could come in behind them and audit them for that month. And then, the city clerk end up signing off on that, in essence.
Any, any type you have, where you can have the person that's doing the work, you have someone else, a separate set of eyes. It could be someone who's not involved with that process, but understands what they're checking, just to make sure that at least the amounts agree. That's just a, a simple process or a simple step if with just two people in the department. And the legislative auditor has come out with recommendations that you can have segregation of duties if you only have two people. Now, I'm not saying that the city needs to drop down to two people. What I'm saying is that there are steps and things that can be put in place, as long as those personnel realize this is their responsibility and this needs to be checked and this is what needs to be done. In addition, they have to understand what they're doing and understand the reason that, that they're looking at it.
And you got to have the personnel to do that.
And you have to have the personnel. So, it'd be wonderful to have an internal audit department, but it would be better to focus on, maybe initially, you might be able to get away with not having internal audit and let your city clerk and your assistant city clerk and all the staff underneath and departments audit, do those steps to make sure that what needs to be done is done correctly and reported correctly.
If you had enough people to do that.
Right.
That's a key, people.
So, we just have these same continuous problems year after year. Is that the reason that this is your last year doing?
Personally, I think that our decision was specifically made due to the fact that there have been a significant amount of hours and delays. And going forward, I believe that we did not want, I did not want to engage to do the audit for September 30th, 2021, and then not be able to have the, the ability to complete that and have to withdraw from the engagement. So, this was a decision that, that I've, that I've made and wanted to let the city know that in the transition, we can provide assistance to help make a smooth transition, to help in any way that we can, because we are still, we still provide this type of But.
Does anybody have any other questions of Ms. Cole?
So, if we came in, and I'm beating the dead horse, but came in and we remounted the accounting department, where we had the staff that we should have, in my opinion, city clerk, assistant city clerk, payables, receivables, et cetera, it would be much easier to get you that information much faster. That way, you can get the audit done in a timely fashion, right?
That would be if anybody was working on the audit.
Test, hello? No, yes, sorry. Do we have any other questions of Ms. Cole? No. Ms. Cole, we appreciate your firm's dedication and loyalty to the city since 1985. And we hope that maybe after we can get some internal problems fixed where it's easier for you to gather your numbers and not have to spend as many labor hours, maybe we can circle back and engage with you in the future. But we do appreciate your relationship and being right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Christine.
With that said, I need a motion to approve the audit.
Mayor, correct that motion, please.
The, the, the motion should read, "I move to accept the 2019-2020 audit for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020," not 2019, "as presented by the accounting firm of Wise Martin &amp; Cole."
I move to accept the 2019-2020 audit for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020, as presented by the accounting firm of Wise Martin &amp; Cole.
Motion made by Ms. Bloxham.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roy. If you would cast your vote, please. Item B on your agenda is to adopt the minutes of the council regular session held July the 6th, 2021, and a council special session held from July 20th, 21.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Michael Roy. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, cast your votes, please. Motion passes. Item C on your agenda is personnel, fire department promotions. Chief, would you come up and make those recommendations to us, please, sir?
We've had the retirement of an assistant chief, Tommy John Hughes, with 40 years and seven months on the job. He retired at the end of the month, well, he, yesterday. And, and, and the, he was assistant chief, so we, I'm asking to promote Ronnie Shireen, who is a captain, to assistant chief with how many years?
33.
33 years.
I'm sorry, 31.
31. He's got two more left. That's why I said 33. And then, Adam Bradley from operator to fire captain with.
How many years?
Eight years on the job. And they've passed the, the civil service test. They both passed the test for their rank.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure?
Upon the recommendation of Fire Chief, Chief Kip Morad, I move to approve the promotion of Fire Captain Ronnie Shireen to the rank of Assistant Chief and firefighter operator Adam Bradley to the rank of Fire Captain.
Motion made by Mr. Michael Roy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vincent Bradford. And I'm assuming there was no discussion from the audience or anything, I kind of skipped over that. No discussion being made. Would you cast your votes, please? Motion passes. Congratulations, guys. We appreciate the job that y'all do. Item D on your agenda is condemnation of properties. And the, the first one that we have is Opal Land Company, LLC, at 409 Chestnut Street, District B. Our curator is with Kitchen's Law Firm.
Yes, sir. Nelson Smith. I'm pinching for Judge Kitchens this evening. And I have two reports, one on the 809 Chestnut Street, the Opal Land Company. Mr. Kitchens, Judge Kitchens had sent out letters to Opal Land Company, nothing had come back. So, we reached out to the Leroy Greider estate in care of Larry Greider in Fort Worth, Texas, since he had been in the chain of title. He had spoken with Mr. Greider several times, there's some email correspondence that Judge Kitchens attached to his report. And, and he informed Mr. Greider that, that he could be here if he wanted to be here. I don't know if he's here or not, I don't know. And otherwise, no response from anybody else, Your Honor. I'm used to saying, Your Honor, Jibba's laughing at it.
I understand. I make mistakes all the time.
But I would, I would submit this report on Opal Land Company to the mayor and city council.
Okay. Do we have anyone here for that property? Is there anybody, would you check outside, please? No one here? Do I have a motion on that?
I move to authorize the mayor to issue an order declaring the profit condemned and further order demolition of any structure located thereon and to clean the law within 30 days of this date.
We have a motion made by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Bloxham. Is there any further discussion on this piece of property? There being no further discussion, would you cast your vote, please? Motion passes. The next one is Hope Youth Ranch Incorporated, 502 Pine Street, District C. I, I do want to make a note on that, that, that is the trailer sitting beside that, that's not the physical brick and mortar store. It's the trailer on the side of it. That store has an address at 500 Pine Street.
And this is 502 Pine Street, Hope Youth Ranch, Inc. Judge Kitchens did send regular mail, certified mail to the last one addressed. It was returned, no mail receptacle, unable to forward. no mail receptacle, unable to forward, and he has attached a copy of his letter with the original envelope and green card and notations from the post office, is attached to Judge Kitchen's report, which I would submit to the, to the City Council.
Is anyone here with that property?
No one is here.
There is no one here with that property. Do I have a motion? That's in District C. Do I have a motion from any district?
"I move to authorize the mayor to issue an order declaring the property condemned and further order the demolition of any structures located thereon and the cleaning of the lot within 30 days of this date."
Motion made is by Mr. Roy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Bloxham. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes.
I have these reports to submit.
Thank you, sir.
Who am I supposed to give them to?
You can just lay them right there in the corner, or you can go give them, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. The next one is Chassidy Willingham, that's at 620 Buchanan Street. Is there anyone here for that property? This is the property in District D. Tina, was there anybody out there? No one? Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
"I move to authorize the mayor to issue an order declaring the property condemned and further order the demolition of any structures located thereon and the cleaning of the lot within 30 days of this date."
We have a motion made by Mr. Roy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Bloxham. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes. E on your agenda is the final approval of a lot plot. Okay. Of approval of the final lot plot. Do I have a motion on that?
"I move to approve the final plat for the lot split of property belonging to Green Properties of Mindon, LLC, located at the corner of Tillman Drive and Marshall Street, as presented, noting that any legal nonconforming conditions particularly regard to utility service tied together or crossing the other tracks created by this lot split will be sole responsibility, responsibility of the property owners."
That motion is made by Mr. Roy.
I second it.
Seconded by Ms. Bloxham. Is there any discussion on this? There being no discussion, would you cast your vote, please? And now, guys, we don't have a quorum.
Do we know why?
But-
Do we know what aggravated them tonight?
I don't know what aggravated them, no, I don't, I don't know. Back to, so the actual-
Let me see if Mr. Edwards is out there, maybe he was just-
The what now?
I'm gonna see if Mr. Edwards is out there, maybe he was just on a phone call or-
Maybe he had to, he had to go to the bathroom or something like that. We'll let Ms. Pittman check on him. Sounds like we're having a rainy day outside, though.
This was critical, we've got budget tonight.
Okay, I will say that the meeting is adjourned, that we were in. I do want to make several comments. There were some important things on the agenda, or at least with CenterPoint Energy, that we had to get approved so that we could continue to have a relationship with them and within our city and repairs, and provide us energy in the way, in the form of gas. Also, we were adopting our millage rate tonight for our, our people, which was the same rate as before. We also were to adopt a cooperative endeavor agreement, a purchase agreement. We have another town that wanted some of our surplus property that we declared surplus last month, and they were going to purchase that transformer, $1,000. This is a city in need of this transformer, so they can apply power, and they were prepared to come pick that transformer up, so now, you know, we can't help one of our cities within our own state. Then, one thing that's really important is our budget, to approve our budget. If, if we don't have a budget, you know, we kick back to 50%. So there, there's a lot of things in our budget that we needed to get this approved. We needed to know what's in our police report, I'm not going to ask you to get up and give that. I, I will say that, Mr. Fleury, did you want to say anything about the finances or anything? I'm sure you've always got something to say.
Off the record of-
The meeting is over.
The, the meeting is over.
Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, the meeting's adjourned, we're just, we're just, we're just, we are just visiting right now.
I want to make two statements, actually. Number one, important tonight was the millage, which needs to be set, the millage rate for the property taxes. And what was important too, for me personally, was the budget. I think, and I want to be very careful, I think it's disrespectful to the people who worked on the budget for so many months, to put some figures together which makes sense. And I don't see any reason why that budget should be changed. There was enough time given. If the budget was the issue to leave tonight, I don't understand that. There was enough time to come to me, or to the assistant clerk, or to the, to the mayor to raise questions in reference to the budget, and I don't think this was proper. That's all what I have to say.